We all did it. We all did it with a couple of years of each other.
It's like, oh, well, it's summertime. It's like, oh, well, it's summertime. Somebody finally asked.
He actually doesn't have money.
That's the only use it for? In construction? That garage is going to be able to. It's on the.
Yeah, he has a husky.
He's got a husky.
No, this garage. I don't. The husky is really nice. How's it different than this guy?
Okay.
I think I've seen him.
Things jobs. I went to get his signature from him, but, you know, this is.
You will try those moves.
Why would I need those every time? He owns everybody. Your property. We live in America. He's been. And I was like, oh. He had a signature on it. I can work an inch wrong.
Was he lonely?
Huh?
Was he lonely?
Oh, yeah.
But I was so curious.
Yeah, like, why would I even need that? Basically.
You ready?
Yes, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening. The Gibraltar zoning board of appeals meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call. Chelsea, you want to, Secretary, call and roll?
Yes, yes. Harris.
Present.
Markham.
Yep.
McCarthy.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Tefend.
Here. We need a motion for the approval of this afternoon's agenda.
Approve, motion.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need approval of the ZBA minutes dated July 23rd, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
New business this afternoon is Mr. Buford of 30350 Adams. Would you like to come up and tell us what you're proposing to do?
Yes, sir. First of all, how do I address the board by you? Mr. McCarthy?
Commissioner.
Commissioner. I currently live on 30350 Adams, and I have an attached garage right now. And I applied for a permit to build another garage on a lot that I have. I live right on the corner, and I wanted to build another garage on my additional lot that I own on Gerald. And I was not approved for that because they, in the, I guess, in the specifications, we're not allowed to have two garages. So that's my primary reason for being here is to apply for a variance to obtain a opportunity to build another garage next, on my vacant lot, next to my house. I can't add on to the existing garage that I have because I have a DTE easement right next to it. So I can't, I can't go to the west. I, I'm going to build on the lot that is to the west of that DTE easement.
And the reason why you need to construct a 2100 square foot garage?
Yes, sir. I'm an electrician by trade, and I have a tool trailer that comes home with me every day along with my work van. And we've had some instances of theft from our yard and some instances of vandalism. And there's times when I have a great deal of material and tools and value in these two, in my trailer. And I would like to just be able to put it in the garage to lock it up. And I cannot currently do that because I only have seven-foot doors. And my, my, the van that I have right now and my trailer are considerably higher than that. The one that I'm getting, which I had a deposit on a Ford Transit 350 high roof, because I'm getting too old to crawl around on my knees looking for parts. So I'm getting a high-roofed one, and that, I need that to fit into a garage. And it simply will not go in my existing garage. It's just too small.
Okay.
How, how long is your trailer and van together?
Eighteen, no, that's, you know, sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Can't be close to 60 feet.
No, it's not 60 feet.
Just, that's, it's long. You're, you're asking for, to get a variance of the 25-foot setback from the road, right?
No, that's not what I'm asking for.
No, it's just strictly the lot.
Strictly to just build it.
Lot cover?
No, not even that.
Okay.
It was strictly just to build it.
Okay.
I have the section here, section nine of the R1, one-family residential district that Ms. Dixon sent me the letter to. It said, "One private garage for each residential lot." This is the permit letter that I, that Ms. Dixon, is it Ms. or Mrs.?
Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Dixon responded to me.
But they don't, they don't have any ordinances against how many stalls you can have in a garage.
What?
They're, like, we just gave, we just, the guy down the street from me just got, like, three garages side by side, three garage doors.
You could have a three-car garage.
You could have a three-car garage.
It was part of your lot coverage.
There's, right on the next street over, or two streets over on Rose Street, a guy built a pole barn that's the size of the garage that I want to build. And he built that last, last year or the year before.
If he didn't come, it must have been okay because he didn't come for a variance.
The, the only reason, sir, that Mr. McCarthy that I'm here is because I'm not allowed to build a garage because I have a garage.
Right.
It had nothing to do with size setback or lot fill. Because we, I did all the math on that, and I talked to a gentleman at McKenna prior to even starting all this here at, at the city hall. He happened to be here, and I walked in and we talked. And I showed him the math, and he goes, "Yeah, it looks good." So I spent $6,000 taking down trees to get started on this, and then I got.
Well, on a side note.
Yes, sir.
Strictly just a side note, I think you're too high, aren't you? I mean, we have a 15-foot height requirement for garages.
Yes. I, that, said nothing about that in the, in the letter that I received from.
Did you submit your building plans to the building inspector?
Yes, sir, I did.
Did they approve them? Obviously, they didn't approve them, but they usually give you a reason.
Just the letter from Ms. Dixon saying, "You can't do this because you already have a garage." There was nothing about.
Okay, that was just a side note.
Yes, sir.
Call me Jeff.
Yeah.
Don't call me sir. I work for a living.
Military background, I can't help it.
The zoning board has been pretty, and pretty down the, you know, we really have never given a variance for a garage on a single lot. You know, the city many years ago put that into the master plan, and we just never, the city's plan, you know, the master, they just don't want garages sitting here and a garage sitting here and a garage there.
Yes, sir.
And if you move, you know, and split the lot, whatever, whatever, we're stuck with a garage that now becomes whatever, whatever. So it's been, you know, the zoning board has never really approved those because it just doesn't fit into the master plan of what the city was going to look for.
There's part of this puzzle, sir, I don't think you know. I am going to combine those lots to, that was part of the, that was part of my plan was to combine. But I don't want to combine the lots unless I can be approved for the garage. Because if I can't combine the lot, I'm just going to sell it. So if, if I can get an approval for the garage, it will be part of my home, and it will all be one lot. I currently own two different parcels.
Right.
They will become one parcel. I actually have the form here to, to combine them, and I got it from, from Ms. Bilt, Mrs. Bilt there, and.
I know. Mrs. Brad?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brad. I've known her since she was this.
Well, that's a planning decision called, when you're going to split lots.
Or combine them.
Or combine them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, combine them. Yeah, that's, that's the planning commission, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
It wasn't the paperwork, but that's what he wanted.
I did put that in the.
It was in there.
Yep.
Well, I won't take credit for the idea, but Jane had a good idea. Why can't you take your existing garage, make it a living space, and build a garage?
Well, that, that's also in that packet. We're going to turn that, because our, we have a basement in our house, and we were going to put our laundry area in the existing garage along with the home office that was in our basement because we lost everything during that flood. We lost our computers, we lost our desks, we lost our washer and dryer, everything. We're going to move all that out to our garage and the existing garage, because it's too small for vehicles. I can't even put a golf cart on a jack to work on it in my existing garage.
So are you planning on remodeling so the garage doors go away and they're just an entrance door, or?
I haven't gotten that far in my plan yet. I have to be honest.
Well, you see his point, right?
I do see his point, yes, sir.
So if you went ahead and got, and got the lots joined, and you came back.
You wouldn't necessarily have to come back.
With a plan. What's that?
You wouldn't necessarily have to come back.
Yeah, maybe.
You closed off that garage, you would only have one garage with this house.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue then.
Then the only issue you're going to have is whatever the building department says. The height is an issue, and.
It's lot coverage.
And I just did some rough calculations, and they were rough, but you're pretty close on the, I think you're okay, but you're tight on the lot coverage.
Yes, I believe, I believe I was like 1,000 feet. I did the math with, and then I brought it up for the McKenna representative here to look at. And he says, "Yeah, the math looks right to me," but.
If you combine them, you might have more.
If I do combine them, I will have more.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
Seems like that's the best way.
Today, right now, our task is to approve or deny.
Right.
Right? And so.
If we deny the variance, he has an option, and that's the key. One of the keys of approving or denying the variance is, your option is to close off the other garage like you planned anyway, make it a living space, and then have your single garage not attached.
Then you wouldn't, you wouldn't come back to us if you.
That's exactly correct.
You're, you're, I've never seen, I've been on the planning commission for 13 years. We've never said, "No, you can't join the lots." Not ever. We've done it every time it's been requested.
One of, one of the things with our board here is that if you have other options, we encourage you to take those as opposed to trying to get a variance.
So the only, the only path I have going forward is if I close my existing garage off?
That'd be correct.
Yes.
I, I have to ask, I, I did a little bit of research, and I found 37 other homes in Gibraltar that have more than one garage. And the next, the guy that lives directly across the street from me, I mean, directly across the street, has three garages. Directly down Adams, one block away, he built a house less than a year ago, has two garages.
You know.
Are they attached, are they attached or disconnected?
One's connected, one's disconnected, just like mine.
I, I kind of went down the first four of the addresses and to take a look at these. And the one across the street from me, we were talking earlier about the one at 30020 Adams. And apparently, the garage was there, and then they built the house. I can't explain what happened. It never made it to this board, I can tell you that.
It, the garage was there, and they moved the house and put it on that lot.
Yeah. You know, and a lot of those other garages look like they were old, you know, or older. And, you know, back 20 years ago, you know, they probably weren't, things were different than they are now.
There's one currently on, on South Point that's being built right now. It's, he has a garage, and he's building another one right, right as we speak, right on South Point. So I, I don't know. I don't want to be the child that says, "Hey, you let Billy do that, why can't I do that?" But I guess I'm asking, "Why can't I do that?"
We didn't let Billy do it.
Yeah. You know, if somebody does something in the middle of the night, and whatever they do, they do, you know, we can only control what we do. And when people come in front of us, as you have, you know, that's all we can do. It's up to the city to enforce the ordinances, you know, if a guy builds two garages.
Just, I feel for you, dude.
I, I went around to all of my neighbors in the entire area and had my neighbors sign a document saying, "This will not bother us." As a matter of fact, one of our neighbors showed up today, just, we didn't even know she was coming, just as a support. I don't see how this would impact the neighborhood, other than it's a vacant lot. And if I don't build a garage, I'm going to sell it, and somebody's going to build a big house there.
And a garage.
And a garage.
Hold on a second. So, go ahead and finish. They're going to build a big house and a big garage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I forgot to mention, in order to get a variance approved, we do need four yes votes to approve a variance in Gibraltar, so I meant to mention that earlier.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to add?
What did you want to say?
Well, we'll have time for that.
Okay.
Anything you would like to add?
No, other than, other than that, I mean, I can, I can turn that garage, that existing garage, into a living space, but I'm not certain I want to close off the doors. Because.
That would be important.
This is my wife sitting here. She's, like I said, our laundry's in the basement currently, and we're going to get that out of there and get it into the existing garage. But I'm not sure if I want to close, close the front of it and change the look of my house. I hadn't, I hadn't had that in my plan, but I do want to turn that into a space.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to ask you the million-dollar question. You know, when you get down to a deal breaker, i- is that important enough for you to say, "Yes, I'm going to alter that so I don't have garage doors," or you're not interested?
I probably won't do that, sir.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir, I think that's it.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming today at this point. If anybody else would like to come to the podium and speak.
This is my wife, Cindy. Did you have anything else to say?
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay.
The neighbor?
Neighbor.
I didn't expect to have to cover.
Well, we tried to keep.
We're pretty informal here.
I just wanted to say that.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Shannon Strosser, my husband Dennis. We both signed the petition that he circulated. We are in approval.
And your address?
13361 Gerald.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we, so we own two lots, and we didn't put the garage up. But our garage is a two-car garage. It actually goes into the next lot.
Okay.
And it's not attached to our house. But I just thought, you know, if he wanted to put a garage on his adjoining lot that's similar to what ours already is. I mean, we, you know, someone once questioned us about buying the lot beside us, but the lot line goes through our garage.
Oh.
So if we sold off our lot, we would probably have to tear down the garage and move it to attach it to the house. It's been there a long time, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you.
The other, I did have one more thing. I don't know if you guys got that in a pack map approach.
Sure.
I don't know if you got these, these are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, we did.
I just went through.
I don't know, I think there's like 17 of them.
Yeah, there's a lot of them in there.
That's impressive. That's a major effort. By the way, this is one of the best packets we've ever seen.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it.
Okay. At this time, any other public comments? Okay, guys, questions?
I got one. Is it a requirement to take the garage door off, though, if you want to turn it into a living space? Is that part of the rules?
It would be up to the city and the building inspector.
My thought is, if you're not parking cars in there, it's not a garage. Because I have garage door on the backside of my place, and it's part of the house, it's part of the, we open the garage door for fun.
That's, that's what I, one of the reasons why I don't want to take that down.
And so I, I'm wondering, I want to get into the very nitty-gritty of what makes it a garage and what makes it not a garage. Because if you don't park your car in there, it's not a garage. If you have furniture in there, I don't know.
You know, but.
It's kind of, and the water here in Gibraltar, I know many places like that.
But the furniture can be moved out and leave it a garage.
Constitutes living space.
End up with a washer and dryer setup in there.
But, you know, you have to look at it. You know, part of what we're doing is a vision for, you know, you want, because you know the next guy's going to come in and say, "Hey, he's got, you know, a garage there and two garages, and we're not going to call you up and see if you got your cars parked in there." You know, I think you have to look at and say, "Hey, it's, a garage is a garage, and there's garage doors on it, and you have to assume that it's a garage."
That's correct.
There was, there was one instance, I just want to interject here with a quick story. There was one instance where I was doing a job at the General Motors Fort Wayne Assembly. I'm a contract, electrical contractor. And I had, with my trailer and my van, I had nearly $150,000 in parts. And I, again, I can't pull it in my garage, so I parked it right on the side street on Gerald and slept on my breezeway so I could see that thing all night long. And I just don't want to go through that again.
Okay, appreciate it. Jane, you want to mention something to say?
Yes, if I may, just a couple of clarifying points. There was a question earlier about what kind of size requirements in terms of what's allowed in terms of bays for a garage. It does say that there should be no more than two motor vehicles, and not more than one of those being a commercial vehicle with one additional passenger motor vehicle. So essentially, one commercial vehicle and two private motor vehicles is what should be able to be kept in a garage. While it's not specific to bays, I just wanted to add that to your understanding in terms of the size of the garage. Additionally, there's not specific definition of living space in the zoning ordinance, but typically with the building department, it's understood as all year round. So it would need to be heated, there need to be, you know, running water facilities of those, that type. I think the garage doors become, you know, a question in terms of, is that a viable, you know, can you have heating and all of that with that, those types of entryway? I'm not here to make that decision, I just want to give that reference point of what we typically define as livable space.
I've been doing it for 10 years.
So in this case, the, let's just say, for the sake of argument, a car's 12 feet long, right? And so you've got two cars, one on each side, and then he's got a van, which is probably, what, 20? 20 feet?
On my van?
Or you said you were going to buy a van?
The, the current van I have is a Chevy Express 2500.
So what's it?
With a roof rack.
20 feet?
It's at least 20 feet, yeah.
All right, so.
My trailer is 16.
So you have 25 and 24, that's 49 feet.
Yeah.
All right, so, and we're talking about 130, no, I'm sorry, we're talking 60, 70 feet?
60.
60? We've got a proposed porch.
There's a lean-to on the back to, to put my heater, air conditioner, and electrical equipment underneath it so it's out of the weather.
Then we're also going to have height issues, because they're 21'3", according to this.
Yes.
You know, so say we do approve the variance, and we come to a, comes back for a height variance, which we just went through that again. So there's other things that need to be addressed.
So Jane, is the way that's written, you know, if he needs 50 feet, that would leave him 10 extra feet. He'd be at 60 feet.
Yeah, I, I think there's flexibility there. I just wanted to offer that definition, because there was that question that came up.
Appreciate it.
And if they're only a few feet shorter or less wide, it would be below the 21. Below, what's the number, what's the number, the maximum height?
15.
15.
So you're talking 6'3", if my math is correct here?
I think we measure it from the midpoint of that roof, so it's 17 and a half or somewhere in there, 17.3 inches, just based off of how the zoning ordinance defines roof height. So there's a couple of feet that it's higher than. I didn't receive the building elevations when the original permit came through. I don't know if that was a clerical mistake on our side or what happened, but I didn't get to flag that at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, we're talking, since we're talking about height, I have a, from Crest Ford, I put a deposit on a new van. It's nine feet, three inches high, and with a ladder rack on top of it, it's another 18 inches, so. That's.
What's your door height proposed?
12.
See, now we're almost getting into a commercial garage in a residential neighborhood. I mean, I get everything you're saying, don't get me wrong, but now we're getting into garage doors that are going to be humongous.
It's one door, sir, 12 by 16 is one door.
That's a big door.
I want to be able to get my van in and trailer.
I hear you. Questions, guys?
No, I don't.
All right, appreciate it, we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the issue is, do garage doors matter if it's, if it's livable space?
The thing is, we're not really making that decision either. If, if he gets the city to agree that that's a living space, that's nothing to do with us.
Yep.
So if, if the city says you can keep your garage doors, you can keep your garage doors.
I agree.
And then all he's got to do is deal with the height, which is not on our plane today. So what we have to decide is, does he have a viable alternative? Which it sounds like he's moving to that alternative anyway. So he really doesn't need the variance today.
Once you, once you put, once you put plumbing for, for a washer and dryer setup in there, you're going to have heat.
I'm just saying, he has, he has an alternative to what he wants us to do today, which is do exactly what he's planning on doing.
Yeah.
So there's really no need for our variance today.
I agree.
Because, because he's already going to do it, and he's not, he's going to be able to have his car garage, his extra garage there, because he's going to close off the, be it garage doors or not.
I mean.
He'll make the, he'll make the deal. I, I mean, I just, I don't see how that's going to be a problem for him.
I don't, I don't either. I, I put all windows in my, my garage door is all windows, right?
Right.
And it's heated, and we, that's our wa, our laundry area.
And we still can open it up and.
I open it up, and we, you know, when the weather's good.
Right. So I just, I just don't see the need for the variance, that's where I'm at.
I've been saying.
And you're pretty confident you're going to make that a livable space, right? Do you agree with that concept of making it a livable space?
I'm going to make it, I'm going to make it a, put the washer and dryer out there, and I'm going to, we haven't decided if we're going to put our, some furniture out there and make it like a living room, or we're going to make it like our home office. But we got to get all of the stuff that's in our basement, we got to get it out of the basement.
So are you planning on heating that area?
Well, sir, I have to because of. Oh, sir, I have to, because I'm putting the laundry in there.
I, I would argue that that's your, one of the strongest cases you have for hardship, cause you flooded.
But it, but it's not because of what he's planning on doing. He just, he just doesn't need the variance, is all I'm saying. And the less variance we grant is
I agree with that, too.
So are you, I mean, we can, we can table it? We can, uh,
Table it and then definitely you wouldn't have to pay if he's got a height variance he wants to try to get through. We can table that and, and let him close off the garage and build his other garage. I mean, I mean, that seems to work for me. It seems like it's gonna work for you guys, too.
You still have to go down the path of conjoining the lots.
I'm sorry, sir.
You still have to go down the path of joining your lots and all that, that other avenue, obviously, that just not, doesn't deal with us at all.
I think this is all gonna work out for you without us, is how I'm seeing it.
Does that make sense?
Um, I don't know how to, forgive my ignorance here, I don't know how to move forward with the permit process since it was denied.
Well, we're not denying it, we're just gonna table it. And then, um, you can take your plans to the, uh, building department and, uh,
Planning Commission.
Or the Planning Commission, first, I guess, the Planning Commission to, uh, you know, combine the lots. And then go to the, uh, the building department, give them your plans and then, uh, tell them what you're doing, you know.
They already have that, sir. I've, I've given all that to them already.
But you haven't indicated you're closing the garage.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna make that livable space.
You kinda did, and you're right, I'd be kinda say that you're gonna, that's your hardship, that's your hardship.
Okay.
That you're gonna move the stuff out of the basement.
So you're gonna make that a livable space and then
Then you have one garage.
You got one garage.
Going back to what Ms. Dixon said, I, her definition of garage was if you can get two cars in it. We can't get cars in it. Right now, we can't get cars in it. I can get a golf cart and an Harley Davidson.
So you're back to, what we're saying is, you don't really have two garages. You only have
Right.
Which
Well, that was, that was what I was saying.
To bring up to them.
But it's gonna be livable space. It's gotta be a livable space.
But that's, that's still washer and dryer and, and, and your office area equals little space.
And that's up to the building department.
Well.
So Jane, so Jane, you're on, you're a planner, technically, right, city planner? So he would need to come to you or come to the board, Planning Commission board, with a plan, saying you wanna join these two lots, I'm gonna make this living space and I'm gonna propose to build a garage. You would say, you guys, or the board, building DDA board would say, yes or no, correct? Or is I might wrong?
Yeah, so then, the next step will be the combination, lot combination, um, so making the application to combine the two lots. The building department, there are, you know, I, I haven't seen any plans that show, you know, winterization and that aspect of the existing garage, and I think that's the key part, bringing in those building department plans for conversion of that existing attached garage space. There might be some modifications that need to be made to meet the requirements. I'm not in the building department, so I can't speed, speak to the specifics of the Michigan building code, but that would then follow to convert that space and
So that's the plan?
Meet the requirement of one garage.
So I guess if, you know, the motion would be to table it based on, uh,
Combining.
Combining the lots and, uh, further discussion with the building department.
As, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. McCarthy, I, I don't wanna combine the lots, cause I was told by the city that once I combine the lots, you can't uncombine them. So if I combine the lots and then I'm denied the garage, I'm kinda stuck. So I don't, I don't wanna combine the lots.
I don't think you, there's a grounds for you to, to, to deny you on the path you're talking.
No, y- y- you've got an important decision. I, I can tell you this. Single garages on a single piece of property is not what the city's looking for. Okay? So, you know, i- if, if what we've discussed is, is a, you know, a nice deal for you and you can have your garage, work with the building department on livable space and, and you're good to go.
Okay. When, when I went around to all my neighbors to get that petition signed, my neighbor directly behind me, the one who would be affected the most, his, his lot is adjacent to mine in the back, and he says, why do I have to sign this? And I said, Jeff, what, what do you mean? He goes, this is your property and we live in America.
Right, and I agree with you.
I, but we also
And I've lived there for thirty-two years and pay taxes.
And I don't disagree with you, but we live in a community that has laws, ordinances, that we all have to live by. And, you know, you can go to River Rouge, you can go to Ecorse. You know, if you want your cities to look like that, where you've got garages and crap all over the place, then, you know, is that what we want in Gibraltar?
A garage doesn't mean crap all over the place.
But multiple, multiple garages is not something that
I don't, I don't think that's a fair analogy, sir. I, I mean, I don't want to be controversial, but
We're a voting community. There are a lot of big garages. Because people have to do stuff to their boats in the wintertime.
We can do two things. We can float a motion to table it. And, you know, you can do as we discussed, or we can make a motion to, uh, for the garage to be a single garage on your adjacent lot.
I'm not sure what the latter means. I'm not sure
You don't want to separate the property, right?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm combining the properties. If, if I can build a garage, I'm combining the properties.
Okay.
Period.
Okay.
And that's, that's, the next step is combine the properties. And, and keep working at it. That's what I think.
What if we combine the properties and say, no, you can't do that?
Oh, who, what's the basis, what is the basis that they can say, no, you can't? We don't, we don't, I don't see it. Do you, do you guys see it?
No.
I mean, if you, if you, if you call livable space, you're within your rights. I mean, it's, that's black and white, you know?
What if, what if somebody who's on that, making that decision says, oh, you got garage doors?
Well, that's something you'd have to talk to them about, I mean.
But I, again, again, when you put a washer and dryer in there, you gotta heat it, you gotta do all the things you gotta do? I mean, I don't know.
Couldn't he, if, if that, if that scenario happened where he said and they deny him, he could come back here with the tabled variance and go for the variance then, for the garage?
But this is his choice.
It's your choice.
We can vote on
I don't know about the un, if you join them, you can't unjoin them?
I think I've heard that.
Yes, sir.
That's new, that's, that's new.
Actually, I've heard that for a long time.
Chelsea, can you?
I've heard that for a long time.
You join parcels?
If you join parcels, you can't
That I do not know.
You broke them apart so people could sell one.
Okay.
I, I've seen it happen in the planning commission.
They, they told me, um, Mr. Markham, that if the property is big enough, you can separate it, but if you have two properties and you join them, that's the size now. You can't, you can't separate them in the future. That's what I was told by the, I, I guess it was the, uh, mechanical guy or whoever it was at the city, when I came up to talk to, talk to McKenna up here. That's why I haven't combined them, cause I wanted to come here first.
Okay, so, um, you wanna combine the properties, make your existing garage livable space and build your new garage? Is that a yes?
Yes, sir. Do I have to do it in that order, though?
I believe so.
I don't know what other, I mean, you
It's all, you can do it all at the same time.
I mean, what were you thinking?
Well, if, I, I currently have, for my profession, I have a lot of my tools in my garage. Can't get my car in there, but I got tools in there. And if I turn that into livable space, I got nowhere for my tools, nowhere to do my job.
Well, you're gonna do it all at one time.
Yeah, you gotta, you, you still, you, the city, you'll go to the city and that's gonna take some time, you gotta get your building permits. And, you know, you've got time.
You'll be fine.
Okay.
At least from my perspective.
I don't know, I just see this going south for me, once I combine these lots and then I'm told I can't do it. That's, that's my fear.
But if you join them, if you join the lots, there is, right now, we, it, it eliminates us from the project. Right? You don't have any variances. Right, guys?
Well, the height, the, the height.
Yeah, as long as it's built.
Yeah, I mean, if you build, i- if you build that garage according to the, the ordinances of the, the city and the building department, you're good to go. You don't need to come back here.
Well, can we talk about the height now, or is that
Yeah, we want to keep this, we're just talking about the garage.
It is the height, that is the garage.
Yeah, it's not what we're here for tonight. We're here to keep it to this.
Do I have to pay another two hundred and fifty dollars to have another meeting?
Well, no, but I, I, I mean, it would
That's why we're gonna table it.
We're, we're gonna table it, but it'd be nice if you can construct your garage to conform to the building requirements of the city.
I can't get a van in, there's, there would be no point in building it then. I couldn't, I couldn't get the van in, my work van in there.
You know
Twenty, twenty-one feet is the height, right?
Seventeen, nine, three quarter to the, to the half of mean, right, half of the mean point.
The height really isn't the issue right now.
No.
It's whether or not you want to try and, and make that garage a livable, livable space and then, then you can build your garage. And then if your garage doesn't confine to the ordinances, then you can come back here and then we can talk about that. But right now, you have to decide, you asked to either take a vote on giving you that garage with two garages, a variance, or denying it, or you can have us table it and you can come back at a future date. That's really where Jeff's at with this.
What do you think, Cindy?
I'll take my chances for a vote.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. So the, uh, motion is to, uh, grant a variance for the construction of a garage on a, uh, lot.
Or deny it.
Or deny it, to deny the variance for the construction of a garage.
Yeah. To deny it or, or accept it.
So basically what he's, we're gonna vote on is the construction of a garage on a vacant lot.
It's not on a vacant lot, sir. It would be combined with my home.
Whoa, 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 wait.
If, if I'm If I may, uh, just because of how the public hearing noticed the variance, I just want to be precise with the request. So the variance was for an additional garage on a lot conditional to planning commercial, commission approval of that lot being combined. So it's not for a garage on a vacant lot. It's actually for an additional garage on a residential lot that has an existing garage. I, because of the legality of this board, as you all know, I just think it's important to be specific with that language, cause that's what was noticed with the public hearing.
Thank you.
So, so we have to decide whether we're gonna allow two garages on one
That's right.
So you can explain it.
So
So this is, this, we're gonna make or approve or deny the allowance of two garages on one residential lot.
That's correct.
That's how it's
And the motion can be
To pass it or deny.
Or if one of you guys don't want to pass it.
In, in our ordinance, we are, we allow one, correct?
That's correct.
So we do not allow two on ordinance?
That's correct. Without a hardship showing.
Many of them, and he does show a hardship.
He does show a hardship.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
To?
I make the motion to approve.
Okay, the motion is to, uh, approve, um, the construction of a second garage on a residential lot? You guys agree?
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it. Chelsea, you want to read the rule?
Just the rule?
Read the name and then they'll cast their vote.
Okay. Harris?
Yes.
Markham?
Yes.
McCarthy?
No.
Olson?
No.
Tefend?
No.
Fortunately, I'm sorry, um, the motion didn't pass. We appreciate you coming and, uh, I'm sorry it didn't go that way.
Okay, I understand. So my options are now turn that into a livable space, it's not a garage anymore, I can build a garage.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
Any unfinished business? Uh, any other public comment? Just need a motion to adjourn. Oh, hold on one second.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hi, Evan.
So, so one thing you guys gotta remember is, and I'm not saying that's what he was about. I did turn that off. I did turn that off. Is, is that they don't always tell us the truth. And him saying he's gonna combine